Educating, informing, serving. TV, keeping government honest.
The six thirty will start for July thirteenth. Meeting of the Westminster Football Board. Any adjustments to the agenda this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to seconds of minutes, June twenty second, twenty twenty two. I'll move to minute thirty back in. Motion has been made and seconded. All of them favorites.
Aye.
Alright, opposed. Communications and public comments. Before we get going on this, since there's a lot of faces that not everybody's gonna know, you could just state your name and be recognized by the chair at that.
John, John Todd. I live up on Windmill Hill Road South. Just a mile and a half worth of West West Road. But it's kind of landlocked from Westminster, West proper. We've got five points to make, I'll keep them brief.
Sure.
My partner's an editor, he says it'll pay off. Gratitude, gratitude for the work you guys do. Like week in, week out. I'm sure your families would like to see more of you, but here you are in service to the town. And thank you. I rarely get to these select board meetings, last one was fine, fine. Thank you. Item number one, after the thumbs up is. At the last select board meeting, you all were received some misrepresentation. That the class four road that Dan Crocker was intending to do improvements upon. It was identified as a class four road and it is. And has been identified since nineteen forty nine as a legal trail. It showed that way on roadmap in the office downstairs. And it's shown that way on the Vermont trans maps. The request that was brought to you on June twenty second was a request to do work on a class four trail. That approval was given. Brings us up the second point. The approval that was given for the class four trail. That work had already been accomplished in some significant part when that permission was requested. That was discussed at the meeting. But I think it's worth noting that the the protocol for putting in a written request for improvements to legal trail or class four trail needs to come in as a written request before the work that's permitted, permission. Item number two includes. That it was a request for six hundred feet of improvements. To allow for logging. Brings us to the third point. Yesterday. There was an additional amount of work that was accomplished on that trail, the legal trail. That connects Windmill Hill Road South with Windmill Hill Road North, about two thousand feet of trail. There was work accomplished beyond the six hundred feet. Of the application that was filed on June twenty second. Filed and approved for on June twenty second. Pacing it out last night. The work that was done was accomplished nine hundred feet beyond the six hundred feet of request and approval given June twenty second. Brings us to the last point. I'm representing a group of six households in that neighborhood. Other than I have lived on that piece of property thirty three years. We've seen nine houses be constructed on that road in our thirty three years there. It's a mile and a half, so it's getting a lot of pressure for further building. And you guys are seeing it in the road maintenance crew, it has to be accomplished. All of that work. Our concern is that the work that's been accomplished to date on that legal trail. And bringing heavy equipment and pulling out bedrock and ledge and dropping gravel. Is turning it into the appearance of a class four road. That trail leads to the the pinnacle trailhead, which you guys probably heard, gets a lot of parking. That's turning this legal trail into a throughway. To achieve access more readily from highway, for instance. To that parking lot and to points beyond. That's my primary concern in wanting to be on the agenda today is to express concern about this work that's being accomplished in a way above and beyond the requested permissions granted. And that it's changing the inherent quality and inherent value and the character of that area. That's two thousand feet, third of a mile that makes that area. Enjoyable to live, so thank you. That's all, I've got perhaps some other people want to add to that information. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm from Eastman, I live on thirteen million dollars set out. I have some concerns about the work we've done in twenty twenty that we have clarified as a block ride vehicle only section of legal trail. Legal trail in the town plan is essentially a recreational thing, but it also allowed access to partial vehicle. Logging and that's our claim. So I'd like to make sure that it's still considered by this select board when it's been named in twenty twenty. The issue then was that motorcycle cars coming through. And it's getting pretty ratty over there. These people waiting to get through. That said, it's a concern to us that this thing becomes a thoroughfare. And is there? When does it become a driveway? Versus in the driveway on a legal trail, which happens. What about the neighbors making it happen? Legal trail specified, you know, maybe it's all. Class four road. And let's make sure that those issues are considered. If there's any potential for development up there, which there is, and I know that we're entitled to do so. That they would follow the procedures. Be right, if this is done under the statute, so needs the current use. Right now, is that worse? After that or? Are those two moving away?
You.
There's a chair in front of us.
With your question on the change from a trail to a different classification or anything, but speaking for myself, I don't see that that, I have no idea. Only for myself.
Well, this, there's, it's our procedure to do that.
Sure, and I have, I bet most of us have no idea what that procedure is.
Yeah.
And I'm not gonna tell you that I do, so.
Yeah. It's, it's found out, it's fair. It's in the class four trails and our class four roads and trails policy section of the county. It's fairly simple and fairly clear. We just are asking the code procedure to follow it, but.
Thank you. Anybody else? Alright, I'll get.
Anyone else want to go first?
I didn't hear.
Dan Crocker.
Thank you.
Um, so first of all, apologize for putting everybody in this situation. My intent is to make a living, I'm a tree farmer, that's what I do, I farm trees. Then we serve, we're with firewoods, logging, but mostly everything, that's what we do. My family's owned the property for eighty, eighty-six years now. We use that trail constantly through the years. I remember doing it, the last time I did a big cutback, it was maybe three, I split all the work on my little two wheel drive pickup truck, dump truck. And I was able to go south through Windmill Road and nowhere. Go over the firewood. We used it constantly through the years. You guys are right on the, it is a trail. I've since looked at it, the previous town manager told me it's class four road and if I needed to get in, I could do what I want. I started the work, I was very clear with you guys, said, hey, I started this, I didn't realize I had to come in and ask permission. Came in and asked permission. Um, I mentioned, I don't know, maybe on my written thing, I didn't put the legends on the other side. That was a, that was a miss by me. Yes, I do have a house lot, I conserve my land. Um, I left two house lots for my kids. One for my son back there, one for my daughter on the front. We have no access to the back of that property. Because through the land trust, I'm not allowed to put a road through that has, that I can plow, it'd be over a mile. It's eight hundred feet down the south side from that house lot. The north side, it's easier to get logs out, you have to boundary it from the south. So that's what we did, just two loads of gravel and the culvert that we replaced. The culvert that was there was dangerous, had holes in it and scrapped it. It's not safe. Um, I've done some legal work on the trail and some history, just for everyone's knowledge. Nineteen forty nine was made a trail, kind of class four of the trail. There was no houses from Tom Manse Fields on the corner all the way to the west road, which was on Bell House. Over subsequent times, it was trail, you know, somebody built a house and then humans went first, over feet from the other side. Pretty soon it was class three. And then more people built and the town had given them permission to improve the trail. There's, I think the last time I looked, someone tried to get the trail on the north side into the pinnacle lines, class three. I don't think it went anywhere, I didn't go that far in the research, but it looks like they probably didn't have the money to do it, it's a lot. Difference between a class four road and a trail by state law, which is basically nothing, except you guys aren't obligated to do anything on a trail. There's slight obligations, I don't know what that means. If you have a button on a class four road or a trail, you have legal access to that. My asking you guys, for permission to do that should be granted unless there's some kind of really unreasonable thing going on. I don't think this was, my pension, not motorcycles, I don't want them going through there. That may be a moot point in ten years when they're all electric and there's no noise, thank God, that'll be nice. So that's, my intent this time was just to get the logs out. We have one more, we're done for the farmer. Apologize for the noise. It's a twenty-five year cut when we're done, we've got two little acres next year. Two more acres we're gonna do later this fall. And we probably won't be back to the twenty-five and the two thousand houses, but. So, um, as far as the house site, I may improve that. The legends on the other side were an issue. Couldn't get down with a piece of machinery, when they have some stuff, we'll have to bring up the road later. My brother almost took the tractor over there. We almost tripped the U T V over there yesterday morning, I looked at Alex and I said, I told people I was gonna do this, but I'm doing it now, because if I send my employees back there and they get hurt on those ledges. That would have been, we also put really nice water bars, didn't make it passable for cars, just so I could get my equipment. The water bars worked wonderful in the storm, checked them out, had Alex look at them today. They held the water back nicely, so they didn't go down there. I told John, I put a water bar at the bottom of the trail if he wanted me to, because there's some windy ones and the water's throwing into these guys driveway. He didn't feel comfortable with that, that was fine. You asked me to do water bars, so we did those. And on the north end, when we're done, there's one spot that goes down as zaps, we'll put a water bar in there. As far as the house lot. That's, was part of my plan, retirement, that's all I have. I have a lot of retirement, tried farming for a living, I take five days off in the last six years. And that includes weekends and holidays, I work all the time. That's part of my plan, it was part of something I want to leave my son, I want to leave something. And that's where I'm at, I just, you know, I don't want to cause any trouble. Done the right thing in my life, but I've served the land, I've put, I've lost millions going, because I had fourteen houses. And I know how to build a house, do all the work, so I put my money, you know, done the right thing. Just want, just do what I gotta do, and I'm gonna be out of everybody's hair pretty quick, don't worry either, so. Um, and, you know, I've always been really open, allowing people hike on my property, bike on it, whatever. Um, and I'm happy, I have a really nice trail system on there, we take care of it, I spend a lot of money on erosion control, the three inch stone out there, I don't see anybody else doing that kind of stuff, so, you know, I apologize for that. You have legal rights to fix the trail. And unless there's some mitigating circumstances, you guys are supposed to allow that. And there is precedent, so for years, you know, someone gets a piece of property, they improve the trail, build a house, improve the trail, build a house. Been going on both ends for, since nineteen forty nine, since they changed it. And I would assume that precedent, I did get some legal help on this, and that was pretty much what I've heard, so. Um, if I do do a house there, it'll be, I'll have to come in from the south end. Come up about eight hundred feet on the V D S, you know, through all that stuff, I'll do it proper. But I don't want to have motorcycles and all that stuff going through anymore than you do. So you quietly build a house. Pretty much it.
So I'm gonna respectfully disagree with you on the do the right thing part. Because you're beyond what you came in two meetings to do. And that's probably what, I'm gonna guess ruffled a lot of feathers, it didn't need to be.
And I apologize, but I thought I put the ledge on, it didn't go bad when checked, so I apologize for that. That's the one thing I didn't do, but I think it comes down to it, I have the right to make access and make it passable, so.
Having a legal right to do something and being and doing the right thing, in my mind, are two different things. That's just my statement, so, alright, can I grab Jim, do you, did you have something?
Yeah.
I'll get Jim and then I'll come back, I'll come back.
But I'll try to keep this short, but, um, a lot of people don't know that there is a village of Westminster, um, which I think last had a a legitimate village funky, so Nancy and I are the two village trustees, well, the village trustees are here now. The, uh, let me say, decades.
Can I just, is this about, are you, are we talking about the same thing?
Job well on the trail.
No, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry, okay.
I thought you were taking me next, so.
Oh, no, okay, well, I'll get, I'll get to you now, sorry, sorry.
I just wanna echo what you're saying, Heather Taylor, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I just wanna echo what you're saying about wanting to follow procedure. Dan, we are very interested in keeping on good terms with you. Um, we appreciate uh, everything that you do for maintaining, um, a huge bunch of agricultural land or forested land, however it's designated. Um, we get a lot of benefit from being there and where we live. And I already said to you, we don't have anything against you putting a house there or, you know, doing the logging that you need to do. But the problem is that um, it's without process and without permission. And that makes it very difficult to feel like we're on good terms because we don't know what you're gonna do. And, um, so I just wanna echo that.
Uh, anything else on the Windmill Hill Trail?
Going back for a few years, you know, Ruth Pierce. You have to remember, spent a lot of time. Kate Vermont made us come back, who actually officially this town declare once and for all, what's a turtle? What's class four? And forever after that, you can never add or change to it. So she spent several years going through it. One thing we learned about it, there's a distinct difference between a trail and a glass floor. A trail was for, a trail did like it said. I've been here too long, probably, but we've had too many conversations of people coming in where there's these groups of four wheelers coming from Connecticut, going up through, rutting it up. Motorcycle people are coming up. Once they find out, and I was concerned about them, once they find out it's a legal trail, they're looking for these places. The minute it's being, you're clearing it up and you're making it better, it's only inviting more of these people who don't live around here. They just see it on the map and they head out through it. I don't, I don't really appreciate when you come and say my legal rights, well, it's, we have simple, we'll just ask our attorney, go look and see what our legal rights are. Don't want, I don't think anybody here wants to go do that. My concern has always been that once we give one person permission, the next party uses that against us. Well, you let Dan do it, or you let this one do it. And the other day, when you came in, you said six hundred feet. And you wrote it, we said, okay, whether we like it or not, it makes sense, we're trying to help you. But it sounds like you're kind of abused at what you asked for, not intentionally. But still, from the outside looking in, this is not what we, that you asked for. And to come and say that, well, I need to keep going a little bit longer. Now, if you want to go longer on the six hundred feet, that's different, but you're past the six hundred feet. And, uh, I, as one board member, no, I don't think it's right what you're doing unless you come back to us with a permit. Saying, stop now, this is what I want to do, I'm asking for another permit, not saying we wouldn't vote for it. But at least you come back and say, hey, I need to go another nine hundred feet. Everybody here gets a voice, their opinion of that, did we give you permission or not to do? Just what I'm going.
Yeah, can I speak one more time? Yes, yeah, I, I agree. I put the six hundred feet, I didn't beg you. So that, you know, in my intent, in my head, I was thinking, I gotta go to the legends, that's as far. But that's, you know, I made a mistake.
I think we need to come back to the plan on how you're gonna put the land back. So it's not accessible any more than when you first.
Well, it's still not, but what it is is.
Maybe as a board, you need to go as a board, look at where you're at. And then we'll come back to tell you what we want it to look like when you're all done.
Yeah, to me, we have game, it was a safety issue, it was tipped really bad, you couldn't, couldn't get through here, to get down to the lower end of my property. And that was, you know, as a subject, I was just, you know, I don't want to see what I've got to skip through.
I had communicated to Todd yesterday that I was gonna go look at it this morning, and I just did not have the time to get there this morning. So I have not seen the south end, I did see the north end. Uh, we communicated that there's gonna be seated mulch and water barriers to deter vehicular traffic. I, I haven't been back since then, so I can't verify that that had been done or not, but. Go ahead.
I would like to add that the access for pulling logs out is possible by going in through the north end. The decision to chop out the ledge has very little to do with getting logs out up there, it has more to do with improving it to that. As a thoroughfare. But the logs can and probably will be pulled out even more than. I, I don't see the purpose in making it all the way through.
Yeah, I do, I do have to get logs out, or my handle's down, can't come up around. So we have to take some of the road, which is going to be later falling up the road. And I just had to get my log over here, that's all. And it's, we didn't make it very possible, we just made it safer.
You're good?
Well, I just, um, I don't know how you can return the bedrock, like, I mean, there's the ledge scraped out on both sides of the road. And then there's also the ledge that was on the bed that's been changed. Okay, what do you do, do you just put rubble back there to kind of make it? I mean, it's, it's kind of, it's a tangent, I'm sorry, it's not really the point of this meeting, but, um, uh, I don't know. There's just been a lot of change up there. And I think things like whether the water bars are effective in a storm. I think there's some subjectivity there. There's other people who have more experience with water flow situations who say those water bars are really not adequate. Um, so, you know, I think that's the whole point of having these permitting processes and asking other people to be involved in the planning of a project like this is to make sure that the result is of the greatest benefit to the most people.
Correct me if I'm wrong, if that had been followed, we probably would be.
Exactly.
That was exactly my point. Yesterday's infliction, as I developed it upon coming home from work, was that work proceeded that was not permitted. I feel like it's two separate projects, I, maybe I'm wrong, I haven't been there to look at them both, but that's my.
I have to jump in, but yeah.
No, go ahead.
So I appreciate everyone coming in and professing themselves, that's what community is all about. I did want to follow with Dan Davidson, you, uh, you for your family had committed acreage to the land trust for complete preservation of those two lots. So how much of the land was that? So you put three hundred acres that you could have easily used for personal granddad and then for all of us to use. Now, I think that's incredibly, I don't know your background, that's incredible to mend the building. And, um, kind of where the essence of where we're starting, however. You also, we all didn't come in here as proud of somebody, so I would just simply very quickly say this. Now, part of being in a community, we don't have a formal venue for mediation, but we're all neighbors, and you're all neighbors and people are concerned. And since you came here and you said you were sorry, okay, you're trying to mitigate what you're doing. And your neighbors are concerned, I would simply ask that you sit down with them or meet with them, that's what I would think, and see if you guys can come up with this, not just restoring what you all be more happy with or more content with collectively. But that you can restore a sense of balance, harmony, and, you know, neighborliness to whatever needs to be done. He has come here, that's why I'm just listening. Okay, as a trained mediator, that he is sorry, I do agree that you know, you are obligated, you're, you're very good at what you do, and you said you've been doing it a long time, so you know what the, what, what six hundred, you know, there could be six hundred feet, nine hundred feet, but.
Yeah, to be more specific, he went six hundred feet, then he went nine hundred feet, more than that, okay?
You know, and I, and I appreciate you, and, and the key here is to come to a resolution that makes you feel not only listened to and the process was followed, and the process that's been written is followed and is followed in the future, but that you also repatriate you know, the animus, or let's say animosity, but at least the friction that's there and see if something could be done. That you guys can get back together to make sure it doesn't happen again. And that you're all on the same page as to what you expect as neighbors. That's all I would say, but thank you all for your input, because that's, that's what it's all about. And I'm not in any way saying you're concerned or not about it. I do look at it, though, and I look at somebody who could have taken that three hundred acres, especially in this day and age. And developed it, and we're so lucky now to have that three hundred acreage for, for recreation, so, thank you.
Would it be fair to request that these types of things, there'll be notifications of them happening? And that they're being posted at each end of the the job site of what's going on and the authorization for that? Just so we have a point clearly.
Actually, technically, that's what I want to say. He doesn't have any permission, permission from us to go to nine hundred feet. We gave him permission of six hundred feet, it sounds like he did okay with the six hundred feet. I think what everybody's saying is he should come back to us and say, hey, listen, I now need to go another nine hundred feet. And there's a select board who would say yea or nay, or have a stipulation there. And that's what my concern is, okay, you, I kind of disagree, because if the neighbors work it out. Why are the neighbors in charge of the road? It's the select board that make sure that we maintain it as a trail, we're the ultimate decision maker. And my thing is, okay, let him come back to the proposal, I'm willing to walk out and take a look at it too, okay? And if six hundred feet's done with there, the next nine hundred feet that he needs to look at. And I'm willing to walk out there and look at it and come back and make a decision on what that permit is, and all he's gonna do is write it up real quick and what he wants to do.
Yeah, just a little clarification, in your nine hundred feet, I did at least a little bit of ledge that was about seventy-five, eighty-nine.
You went nine hundred feet beyond the six hundred feet that you requested.
What I almost did was that little bit, we just walked out and did that real quick. And the only thing I did was we did cut some trees along on my side.
I'm Kirsten Duperson, I live on.
Kirsten, can you spell your last name? Thank you.
And I guess the bottom line is exactly what you were saying, is that we just want the policy followed. And we want them followed before the work's done, not after. And that's what we're talking, we appreciate that we're, we understand the hope, we appreciate that. But we're just reflecting that, you know, at eight o'clock in the morning, there's not a ledge hammer up there for wearing out ledge that we didn't even know was popping in, and that we didn't have a permit for, that's our issue. Like I said, we're fine, we go, I'm taking our, I'm taking our own stuff, we just wanted to go through. Like I said, we're fine, we go, I'm taking our, I'm taking our own stuff, and we just wanted to go through the proper procedure in doing that.
The long-term view of this is possible, houses that go on in up there, and let it not be a through road.
This is awful. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, that, I really don't care.
We can sit down, we've always gotten along, so we should, we should all.
Should get a writ, and you should get a writ of permission from the select board.
Yeah.
Definitely, they'll come back to us, like I said, if you want to go, I'm willing to walk up there and look at it too.
It sounds to me like it's already done.
Yeah.
Is it, I mean, are you, are you done, or?
We're done, yeah.
I think that, I think that the problem is that it's already done.
They want my kids, you know.
We didn't say going back in the fall, you said, and I'm all done, I made a mistake, I don't think I've.
Yeah, we will, we have some more things to do in the fall.
So that's, 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 we'll take a look at it, come back with what it was, and then these people will know that it's in the minute. It is in the agenda coming up, that we're going to discuss it tomorrow. But, but thank you.
Um, I, I think it's fair to request that as much restoration of the site as possible be done with the logs. That we get grass planted, or the appropriate means, uh, that litter coming down um, as much as possible, to reach sort to the point where it's a viable recreation of trail. And now just a, a logging road. So what would just be detailed, please, that's the decommissioning and ending of the logging road.
I think, you know, I, I heard what you said about being a mediator and wanting to make sure people can talk it out together and address it that way. I think also, you know, citing that the first instance was a mistake, and you know, the unapologized works, I didn't quite do this right, and here I've already done this work, this was at the twenty-second, the June twenty-second meeting. Um, so, hey, let's just, you know, take care of this. Like, that was one instance, but now here we are, another instance of, oops, I guess I I didn't follow it the right way, and, and I've taken out ledge to the south, which I said I wasn't gonna do. So, that's, I think, another point of tension is if there's a promise made, or if there's a statement made, you know, is it likely that that will remain the same, or is it likely that that might change? And how would you know if it's gonna change?
Yeah, and that's why, I'm, I'm, that's, that's why it works as a facility, and has been over thirty years to make. I'm simply pointing out that especially bringing up the fact that he had his land, when all of you have brought in this collective concern, um, it's key that you all we, as a board now, okay, we can say stop, or we'll say stop again. That's what we really, you really need to understand, our limited jurisdiction needs matter. Which is the land. We can sit up here as, as a select board, and make it seem as if we have compulsory power over prior landowners, I tell you right now, that's really not gonna work in a long time. That's not how much power that this has. However, you do have the ability to work together with a person who owns that land, that you own your land, and collectively understand going forward that you have a communication, and that you expect that Dan's gonna do something, or you're gonna do something, that he's gonna come and say, look, this is what I wanted to do beforehand, and then if there's a problem and you can't resolve it, it should come here before anything commences. And you should follow the procedure, I agree with you completely. But at the end of the day, don't think that this, that this board has like this, this huge and all sorts of power, because it does not. It does not. You know, uh, we have rules that we observe, we have rules that we can again say, you broke the rule. Okay, but our power is limited, other than the sitter and browking somebody, I'm simply saying that he came here, he's acknowledging that he did something he shouldn't have done. And what I'm saying is, the best opportunity for, for your concerned posts on our side is to take that opportunity and try and make it work, if it doesn't, by all means, as Greg said, come on in here, and, uh, we'll see what we can do.
It's not our duty to make it work if he exceeded the request of.
I understand, I get it. I get it, but part of mediation is just, you know, trying to get a conversation together to avoid the future, and stop everyone going into a balkanized camp.
Dan placed a call to Heather and I two nights prior. Said, I'm seeking your blessing to do this. We both said, we are not in a position to offer any blessing or any permission for this.
Okay.
This is something that goes through proper channels.
Okay.
For him to then proceed yesterday, doing what he did was incorrect and against the permission of the town.
Understood.
In this case, so Dan turned back and has worked it out, meaning what he's asking for, whether totally everybody, at least he's come back with us in select order, and everybody will have it in writing, what this is what he's asking for. They, whether they agree with the select board, or we, or don't agree, but at least at one time, the select board made a decision that we're gonna let him do a thousand more feet, this is what he's gonna be allowed to do, or not allowed. He would have your input in for that.
There is a challenge inherent in what happened in June twenty-second. There was a misrepresentation on June twenty-second that allowed this to proceed, that might have proceeded otherwise if there had been neighbors present to be able to offer some correction.
I, look, I'm speaking for myself, and I would offer to all of you my sincere condolences for not more vigorously uh, uh, asking Dan, or going up to myself, if that's not true, I apologize to all of you. If that should have been, I'm talking to myself also, that, no, you're, I'm not, I'm not in any way disputing that, and I, and I totally agree with that, I'm simply saying that going forward, I think it's critical, when I'm here, is make sure the communication remains open so that this does not become, you know, more of a that there's, that there's conciliation here, and then there's a re, a rebuild, and that this is fixed. It's about fixing problems. You know, I, we all get that this shouldn't have gone down the way this, and I apologize for myself for not doing more. Do your job on all taxpayer behalf, and, and making sure that this is, you know, more, more, uh, more looking into, so I, I apologize to all. I'm simply trying, trying to put out a a solution, maybe communication is the best way to fix this going forward.
To be fair to all of them, there's a select board tonight, so if we kind of leave them or not knowing what we're doing, why don't we at least agree so that they know that our next agenda, we're gonna ask Dan to come back with something, like, it's okay with Dan? And then we'll, we'll be already on the agenda, so that anybody knows that he's gonna come back, prepare to him, we need to do it as quick as can, uh, as possible. And so, at least when you leave, you'll know that next meeting, we will put it back on the agenda. Instead of I just have to call you or notify you, we'll have it, you know, post it, but at least as we leave, our intention with select board, we'll put it on the agenda at the next, at the next meeting.
And one other thing, you know, a lot of stuff went back through within, you know, motor signs, zoning, nobody ever.
There's no motors on the signs, it says, no, not a through road, no authorized.
But, but all that stuff, where you guys did it, nobody contacted me, I've been this landowner, I have the most well-funded. So what I, all I'm saying is, we ought to all be both sides, we just need to let the other side know.
Right.
So I understand you, but y'all happened to me too, so.
You guys are authorized vehicles.
Yeah, no, I'm not, I'm, I'm not, I'm just saying, you guys went and worked on that, nobody brought me in on it, only because.
I apologize for not notifying you, I'm sorry, I was thinking, I was thinking about residents, I wasn't thinking about people who own land, I was thinking about people who, you know.
But, yeah, everybody, it was one where they're fifteen hundred.
All right, so, we thank everybody for coming, for sure, is there anything else on this matter at this time? We will put it on the agenda for next time. Uh, thank you all for coming. I'm gonna go take a look at it tomorrow morning, as I said, I went today and I didn't make it, but I will tomorrow, if somebody wants to ride with me.
I will ride with.
You're gonna go on, we'll, we'll figure it out.
All right.
You two can all go separate, Dan will just call you. We have, we have to warn you.
Yeah, at some point.
You want me up there?
I'll, 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 I'll be the one to do what they're doing, and walk up there, so I see it. But it just can't really have more than two people.
Can you let us know what time? Wait, maybe you could email five, let us know what time you missed the left there.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna shoot for eight o'clock. Tomorrow morning. Well, well, hold on, are you good with eight o'clock? We're, we're gonna shoot for eight o'clock, about thirty. All right, thank you, we appreciate your time.
Would you be okay by one?
Yeah, yeah, yep. You sure? Field, field trip.
Well, I'm.
Yeah, yeah, no, you're good? All right, very good, see, any other communications and public comments? On any other subject?
Yeah, yeah. Um, sorry for misunderstanding your question earlier.
Uh, no, no.
Uh, Nancy Delzel, Jim Mathel, Nancy Delzel and I are here about the village of Westminster. Mostly to inform you of a couple of decisions we made, and, um, what's gonna be happening when it does affect the town. Um, first is that to everyone's surprise, when the ARPA money came out, uh, the village got some, which the village, as you know, hasn't had a a, a village function, like taking care of streetlights or anything else for decades, and should have been removed from the books, and that never happened. Like a lot of small villages. Um, so anyway, we thought that we dealt with that in a reasonable way by voting to have that money go to the town instead of the village, which was legally allowed. And by making the town manager, um, the agent for the village as well as the town, which was also allowed. Um, and Russ, at the time, did, dealt with that through the, around League of Cities and Towns, which is handling that on reaching out and through the regional commissions to the towns on the state's behalf. More recently, Ally and I were working on it with the people from VLCT and London Regional. And we learned that because the town of Villa, the, the village of Westminster is really just a vestige of itself, that should no longer be on the books, but is and doesn't have the kind of budget that a functioning municipality does, that rendered the village ineligible in the first place, and nobody knew that. The money came in, federal government does not see things this small in their scope. The money came to the state, the state sent it out. Um, we now know that it shouldn't have been, um, received. What's happened since then is that on June thirtieth, we had a meeting of the village trustees, and we voted to return the money, uh, which appears to be the only one we can do. Um, and, uh, we informed VLCT of that. And, uh, and Ally jumped in on this if we need to, and Katie Buckley of VLCT has uh, suggested, and Ally has done, that the, the, that money be segregated, so when the time comes to return it, that can be done, it'll be cleaned, there'll be no right, no concern about where the money was, or yet.
So I, I think I, one of my reports, I, that that money can possibly be sent back for forty thousand plus dollars, and, um, if you are looking at your.
It's going back.
It's going back.
So, yeah, so that's one piece, um, we, in that motion, we also said that we wanted to ask the state to hold the town harmless so that that money, um, which we thought, I think it was like free money, obviously great, well, now it's going back. Um, if that could stay, that would be better for the town, well, they can't do that. Uh, we learned from one town that, that said no to the ARPA money on day one, that money went back to the federal government, and a little, some of this money is, is county money, that because we don't have county government, went to the towns and villages. A portion of that, but a very small portion, didn't come back to the town, um, and that's that happens up in Montgill. But, we just wanted to be sure that you knew where that was, and, and why. At the same meeting, um, we took up an issue that has been taken up apparently several times in the past, and, and not, not, nothing has ever done with it. And that's to simply do the right thing and dissolve the village government, so that this kind of stuff doesn't keep happening. It used to be ain't broke, don't fix it, you don't have to do anything, nobody cares, well, now it's changed, and things, and later on, you've got the, um, litigation plan. FEMA has decided that the village needs to approve that village town mitigation plan, or it's not gonna be accepted. We've already dealt with that, which we feel when that was up on your agenda, but all reasons why we need to get rid of it, so where that leaves us is, again, on the advice that I got from, um, VLCT was that we work with the town, which is a VLCT member, to get initial guidance from their legal department on what we need to do. Now, you went through this already with North Westminster a few years ago, it, it's basically the same process, except that this village doesn't even have a check. And so, um, they can give us the guidance to make sure we get up on the right foot. I reached out to the London Regional Commission and asked if their staff could help with admin things, so that when I felt on the chore, uh, I'm the town manager. Um, they suggested yes, uh, that they would do that. Um, and so what I'd like to do is work with Ally to, uh, contact VLCT to make sure we get going, and then work together on just pushing it forward. It's gonna take a good year to do this, it turns out. Um, it's, it's quite the involved process. So hopefully we can clean it up, uh, so that people in the future, one suggestion we had was, hey, they won't even know, just don't, just ignore it, oh, no. Um, I've experienced that, um, in the past.
They'll advise at some point.
The, uh, yeah, do it right, because someday someone's gonna wanna come down and dot those i's and cross those t's.
Yep.
Just wanted to lay it out there, and anytime you don't wanna look into it anymore, I'll let us know, and I'll work with Ally, uh, going forward.
Thanks, Jim.
Thanks for your.
Uh, any other communication?
Um, yes, this, this is Alice Cazano. Um, I would like to add a question to this issue.
Oh, Alice?
Yes.
We can't hear you very well, hold on one second, I'm not sure if it's on all right.
Um, I think it's on her end, but I'll try turning up the volume on this.
Try, try again, Alice.
Hold on, um, it's Sal's Cazano, I have a question regarding the dissolution of the village.
Sure.
Can, can you hear me now?
Yeah, you're good.
Okay, um, when the village was for, was formed, it was formed in order to create the volunteer fire department. The volunteer fire department is part of the contract with the town and the village, and I understood that if anything ever happened, that the town no longer decided to support the fire department, that the the equipment and the building would go back to the village of Westminster. Now, I'm concerned if, um, whether the fire department is involved in this dissolution.
Yeah, defer to Jim on that.
You're right, you're right, Alice, the, uh, the, when the, when the fire district number three was formed, apparently, I don't know why, but the decision was that, I guess, not knowing how that was gonna work going forward, the decision apparently was made that if that fire district did not succeed, then as Alice said, the equipment and land would revert to the village, which I think was probably transferred for a dollar or something, and it would revert back. Same situation, however. Today, the village would, what do we do with the fire department, number one, and number two, the fire district serves the entire town. So I'm looking at it, um, there is a deed, the, when that transfer was made, and it does specify that issue that Alice identified correctly. Um, and I think that one of the things that would have to be cleaned up in the process legally is to change that. So that, first of all, I don't think the fire district is gonna go away anytime soon, but to change that legally, so that you weren't trying to take a town-wide fire uh, function and revert it back to a village that's in no position to handle it. Um, so that would have to be, uh, Alice, exactly right, that would have to be, I mean, that's an important part of it, and who knows what other things we don't know yet.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Nice of you reminding us of that, Alice.
Good point. Uh, any other communications and public comments?
Well, I was in the neighborhood, so I thought I would stop by and ask, what's the status on the hard load? Well, with regard, I was in the neighborhood, so I thought I would stop by and ask, what's the status on the highway? Um, when, when I first started talking to guys about this, you said we needed to consult with your attorney. My understanding is you have gotten any agreements from your attorney. And the, the, that opinion, it was that the town should go forward with acquiring title of the property. So
My last correspondence with Larry, which was probably a couple of months ago, that he kinda, I wish I had it, so, but he was, uh, working on it. It wasn't, it was, it was Larry and Fletcher. They both were in agreeance, they were, Fletcher was working on finding a surveyor to do the survey portion of it that Larry had requested, I believe.
Yeah, I think he said
And he said, and Fletcher's words were, I'm just gonna, the town tends to use D Bernardo, but I think any licensed surveyor that would be willing to take it on would work. And I agreed with him. And I haven't heard anything from either one since, and I emailed them at that time to just make sure things weren't getting lost, that's all.
Alright, I will.
If I had other information, I'd tell you, that's all I got. But I, I can email them again tomorrow and see.
Yeah, why not?
Yep.
We probably ought to be emailing them on a regular basis until we got some action.
I'll, I'll shoot him another one tomorrow. Okay.
Alright.
Thank you. Any, any other communications and public comments? Alright, um, moving on, unfinished business, Route one, uh, Route one twenty-one bridge discussion. Uh, in our packets, we have the three options. From Vtrans. Um, somewhere around here, it says what there, this is the option two, is the preferred option from the agency perspective. Which
They, they're looking for our approval?
They're looking for a letter of support from the town for what option we would like. They're pursuing.
They gave it one, two, and three, but no four or five.
No.
No. No. Uh, so, option two, we read through it and Chuck, Chuck might know more about this than I do. But option two is uh, the deck staying the same width that they proposed, which is like four feet wider than it is now. Yep, the deck stays the same. The abutments stay the same, this is just new steel, new, uh, beams, girders, whatever, however you want to word it.
You know, one pier in the middle was encapsulated and covered in concrete.
So some pier, some pier work.
Right. It's not, not in some bad shape, we just changed the configuration slightly to take on the new new, uh, steel.
Uh, before we get going too far on this, Chuck and I did draft up a quick letter in support of, uh, moving forward. It wasn't at any often, it was just let's not stop completely and start over, let's keep, try to keep momentum going. Uh, I apologize to the board if I, why not, if I, I didn't bring it in front of everybody, I did what I thought as road commissioner within my wheelhouse, it, maybe it was or it wasn't, but, um, anyway, that, I decided to get that.
And basically, yeah, with the public, we're looking at another whole year.
So regardless of, regardless of whether or not people with option one, two, or three, the timeline is going to be the same.
Yeah.
And the difference is, the, the cheapest one they gave us was one and the sixty-eight thousand dollars more to go to out of our profit.
Right.
The, the problem that I, that I see with one, and I think Chuck would agree with, with me on this, is you're gonna go through all this work and all this effort and you're gonna get a twenty-year bridge for a pile, for a pile of money. Where it's all, it's all expensive, no matter how you look at it, but if we go with what they prefer is option two, we're back to an eighty to a hundred year. For the maintenance is much less, the steel comes, uh, coated of some kind that it doesn't need painting and sandblasting and all that kind of stuff, so.
The only reason we go off is like you said, it was much quicker.
Yeah.
In the same period of time, do it right.
The meeting we were at, we were told it was from ten to twenty years off of one.
And they hesitated very heavily, hesitant, they were very hesitant to put a timeline, a, uh, longevity of that bridge on it, they really didn't wanna commit to.
No. It's a big twenty years.
Yeah, it, the, the wording they used were not real popular, it was a long, long term.
It was always a lot of money to do that, we were talking the same timeline.
Yeah, it, I mean, so I have a letter that, uh, Vern Temple sent in that I'll read and we can submit it for the record, but uh, to the Westminster Vermont Board, Slough Board. Please accept this letter in lieu of my absence as I'm unable to attend this evening's meeting. Please note that during your discussion on the Route one twenty-one bridge replacement, that an eighteen-month closure timeframe becomes unreasonable for everybody. It increased safety concerns, detoured buses, it interferes with access to healthcare without a more direct route, and it interferes with commerce for all towns involved. Uh, the original eight-week closure made it reasonable to utilize detours, however, in eighteen-plus month closure of that bridge required that the board give serious consideration to a temporary bridge replacement to ensure access to the community members. Route one twenty-one is a main thoroughfare and tax-paying citizens expect reasonable accommodation. I look forward, I look forward to hearing about your discussion, uh, Vern Temple. Uh, I I can appreciate his concerns and I don't disagree with his concerns, but I don't think we have a lot of choice in that, when you talk about a temporary bridge, which isn't even on any of these options, you're probably adding hundreds of thousands of dollars more to the same bridge.
Isn't that becoming hard? They don't fund that, that's not right.
Yeah, well, you know, you're adding exponentially to that.
Well, they originally gave it for, for like a hundred and twenty-five thousand, right, of our block to put the temporary bridge.
Yeah.
And that's where they worry about, I'm thinking they find something that could be hung up.
Right, and, but I didn't understand, let's go back to that one too, I thought they were gonna stop working on it and then go back to here. You're talking to the governor and start working on it now?
Yep.
Close it for eighteen months?
No matter when they start it, correct, they're gonna close it for eighteen months.
Yeah, that, that was our feeling, was eighteen months is eighteen months, let it start now.
They've already got the sparring replaced, they've already got the scaffolding replaced.
I don't understand what you said, work on it though, if they're not gonna be, you can get the steel for a year. Why, why?
They're not, they're not, somebody wants the steel for a year.
It says right here, they, they did.
They, well, since then, we've been from McCarthy's call, but they felt there was no doubt before then.
It says it's gonna take a while to design it, even before they can put the order into the steel.
Yeah.
I, I guess. I think, yeah, I think that they, I think they've straightened some of that out. Just reading.
It's not like, yeah, okay, so, I don't know what you've done, but like, I was told, uh, told in conversation by J.D. McCarthy of Carver Millard, that if they started right now, they blew deck office, doing the concrete work they had to do to accept the steel. At most, they would be a month waiting for steel, or they'd have everything in place.
This is not saying, this basically said they were gonna have, there wasn't even said it was fall, they could put the order in because they had to design the steel.
Yeah, so Craig, in the back under summary, uh, second paragraph down. Uh, speaking with Chuck Lawrence today, town reformer, it appears the town is leaning toward option two and would be willing to close the road this summer fall to begin the demolition of existing structure and possibly begin work on the pier. This would help accelerate the construction and possibly allow the bridge to be open to traffic earlier in twenty twenty-three. Uh, I did see an email somewhere though that mentioned steel being, they think it will be more readily available than they were originally thinking. I just, I thought it was in this, but I don't, I guess it's not.
No, I'm, I've got, I've got it on your mail.
I saw, I saw that number at a time.
But but that was after we had worked at it and discussed that.
Well, it does, please note that the estimate, estimated indicated above were calculated to the point of comparison options only. Once an option has been selected, the design plan is developing more exact estimate will be developed. I, I I see no sense in, in rehabilitating steel that's there to get a ten to twenty-year lifespan out of we'll be doing this again in no time.
And so here, here's something else to consider, so you go, go off from one. You've got the bridge using Westminster West, it's gonna have to be replaced. And if you kick it down the road, this one's gonna be bad again at the time that bridge has to be replaced.
I don't think anybody here is wanting option.
No, 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 I'm just, I'm one thing is
No, I don't, I don't think it's money.
Somebody was thinking that, I don't.
No, I just think it's nothing to do with money, we're, we're gonna get a hassle about it, the length of time we're closing that bridge. I don't, yeah, Mr. Chair, option two seems to be the, the most viable of the, of those options.
In my opinion, right, no, it's mine.
Do we need to make an elimination on this this evening?
Uh, the sooner we get them a letter of
and, uh, we authorize you to go ahead and we'll send the letter into option number two. It's, uh, voted by the Slough Board.
You know, nobody's gonna be happy about a sixteen, eighteen, sixteen month closing, it, it, it's, it is what it is, so.
That's really, that's out of our power.
Well, they're right, and no matter whether you go with option one or two, the timeline is the same.
Right.
Of closeness.
Well, Mr. Chair, based on the, the delegates presented, um, I like my motion of formally accept option two. Uh, so, presented in writing. Uh, we stated from our high division, project liberty drill, graphic design section, July fifth, two thousand twenty-two. Submitted sincerely by G. McCarthy, structure project. Oh, second.
Also, uh, since we're, we're, hold on. So we have a motion, and seconded, is there any discussion on?
Yeah, well, any discussion? Make sure we send a letter, especially to those people who live right there. I mean, as much as they read in part, they oughta know that, that people, you know, I'm talking about on the other side of the bridge.
Uh, in, um,
The Copeland?
Yeah, uh, no, this side of the bridge. They're the ones that gotta turn around, go all the way back up and come back around. You see what I'm saying?
Oh, we're, Buckner's apartment is there.
Yeah. Nope, no, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah, well, as soon as we get a real, um, and what you're gonna have to do in the winter time, you're gonna have to plow, still plow there to let those people out, right?
Right.
Yeah. And if so in my opinion, if it's something changes and the steel comes in in the winter and we say, hey, we, we can get that steel set, we can send a couple of orders down there and get it plowed out and get it so they can set the steel in the winter. If it's an option, if it's not, then no problem, we'll work with it and figure it out, right?
Need to make an amendment, Craig, to reflect what it is.
Well, I'll do it.
It's not having to be part of the motion, it doesn't matter, just send the letter of no, the motion is fine, okay? Wanna make sure we know the five people.
So motion has been made and seconded, uh, any other discussion this time? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Or opposed? I think we probably should put, well, we could definitely put something in the Gazette as well. Or, we don't know the dates, but expect a long.
Uh, why don't we just send an order to that? Like the Slough Board, the tax, you know, or, yeah, you just don't let, let them know too, that, because the Slough Board, they had no choice. We got more of it for eighteen months, so they know.
Nope, no, I'm just looking at.
No, I don't know if anybody that the bridge closure was off, so.
No, I didn't say that.
No, 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 I'm just saying, pardon, people shouldn't get that present. I said it was a slight delay, but they'll
A reasonable courtesy, that's standing in the middle.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Well, I'm just saying, no, we shouldn't be surprised if we start, the lights come back on and
Yeah.
things start happening.
Yeah, yeah, and we'll, they'll have their public relations person, they'll be, they'll be online.
I've, I've spoken with all the road funds around the world. And then I assume the staff probably will contact the, the sheriff department, it's gonna be a little chaos if people get turned in on what is gonna happen.
Thanks, Tim. Alright, any other, uh, discussion on, uh, one twenty-one bridge? Just curious, you want to bring? I think, um, well, hold on, sorry, sorry, Pauline, I don't even look that way, sorry, go ahead. Can't hear you.
I know, am I there now? I just, you know, I, I just wonder if, um, before this all goes through, if maybe a weight restriction for that bridge might be a good idea?
They didn't indicate to us at that time, this was probably what, three weeks ago now, that there was one needed, but we can, we can talk to them.
I just, uh, it was a question, I, I, you know, if, if it's, if it's in that need of repair at that level, I, I worry, I worry about trucks, you know, a lot of basin trucks go through there, a, a, a lot of heavy equipment goes through there and I, if it's not safe, then, uh, maybe a weight restriction might be, um, a good idea, advised anyway, so.
It might be able to get trucks trained before it's closed to, to get used to
Yeah.
Around the other ways.
Just.
Do you wanna give, do you wanna just shoot that McCarthy, uh, uh, question about that? Oh, alright, very good, thank, thank you, Pauline.
I'll come.
Uh, anything else on one twenty-one bridge discussion? Alright, uh, moving on, uh, conflict of interest policy.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, we're making very good headway with this, um, but given the fact that this is July, uh, several of our cohorts involved in this are not here, uh, for whatever reason, so.
You wanna continue to table?
Continue to table, but there is the, there is a amendment made, and I think there should be an opening discussion on some of these proposals, so, yeah, let the table, so that way we have a full
Okay.
A full, um, forum, folks that are interested in this policy, because there are some things that need to be discussed. Because there would be teeth in it for some of these.
Okay.
Okay, so, so we'll table conflict of interest policy this time, yeah.
Tax rate approval.
Okay, before you, um, this is the tax rate that, uh, I worked on. It's a little different from last year. And the biggest reason, of course, is, um, it's not ever the town, the fire district or the local agreement that is the big tax issue, it's the education tax. The education tax coming in is a very nice number this year. For a change, the homestead folks are gonna get a lower rate than the non-homestead. So, um, it's quite a big difference. The non-homestead didn't move too much. Um, but the homestead rate came down quite a bit. What, twenty, twenty-plus cents, twenty?
Good job, good job.
Um, so, the other thing, um, uh, that I would like to discuss with you, um, while you're looking that over, we have an option which has been, which has been tabled before. You can charge residents up to eight percent if they don't file their taxes in a timely fashion, that we have to, we create another tax bill for them. So if they violate, we have, then the home state comes through, we have to print another tax bill. That's, that's, that's revenue for the town, but it's also kind of a, for the residents. Um, in the past, when I've come before you, um, in my past life here, uh, they've said, well, we'll charge them one percent, we'll charge them three percent, we'll charge them nothing. So being, this is the first year pretty much out of COVID, I wouldn't suggest you try and rack the stuff, but I have to, that has to be part of this before we start printing tax bills, that has to be zeroed out or at your pleasure of what you'd like me.
So you want to be at zero, um, on penalties of, of new lane?
No, of by, of filing your homestead declaration right.
Yeah. We've always been pretty good about.
Yes, we, we, oh, I don't think I've ever been here once when you charged the eight percent. Um, but when you do charge a percentage, it's revenue, but it's, isn't worth it, you know?
Well, but you, you, that's a separate motion.
Yeah, but I just wanted to, yeah, but I wanted to get.
Um, you have the original signed?
I have that, yeah, mine, the original will be in yellow.
Okay.
If you're happy with that, you do have last year's rates to see the difference, because I was it took me most of a day to read this, because I was very, very nervous, because the rates were so different from last year on the home state. Uh, I've had it, I had it looked over by more than one person.
You don't really think it's still alarming than, uh, for me, being here a long time? If this is like the third year in a row where our grant list has gone down. And, and I don't know why, because every year we kept thinking, oh, we put up new houses, we did this and we did that, and it's still down, and I I remember last year when our town manager was saying that, you know, hey, it's gonna go up and see all these, but it ended up going down.
Well, we're, you know, you're selling, you're selling Where did, you know, you were selling, you're selling homes and, I mean, I mean, it's just.
I.
Pauline, she said, Alia, house, we had assessed it, two hundred and seventy-five thousand sold for five hundred and twenty-five thousand.
That's not good. That's what I'm on this something, but it's not a trigger to rephrase that.
That's right.
So we somewhere along the line, we might need to have a meeting with the listeners to go over that, like where are we at?
Right.
And we're, you know, on this townwide, you know. We were, I was being led, but we were, this grand list is gonna keep going up. And which is not bad, you know, which is really good, but I can't believe the last thirty years we went down.
I thought last year Russell were gonna hit free.
Yeah, we never did.
And I don't remember what reason, but there was.
Well, we took a few things off. It wasn't counting police station, but still, this is, this is apple for apple compared to one.
Yeah.
But, but I'll go ahead and, uh, make a motion that we turn around and set the town rate for fiscal year. Two zero twenty-two to two zero twenty-three for the town of Westonster, the homestead would reach two dollars and thirty-three, two point three three nine eight. And the non-homestead would be two point three eight two eight.
Second. Uh, motion has been made, uh, to approve the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three tax rate. As written. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wouldn't, um, take a motion, I'm gonna keep zero percent at the.
I'll go ahead and make the motion that we charge zero percent on anybody that's late. What is the, it's gonna be the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three? Twenty-three.
Twenty.
Homestead.
Late.
He's zero percent.
Second. Slaughter death. Uh, motion, motion has been made and seconded to keep the.
Penalty. Late homestead filing fee.
Late homestead filing penalty at zero percent. Percent. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Or opposed? Motion passed. Uh, anything else?
Sorry, who was the second?
Uh, Kevin, Kevin?
Yes.
Kevin was the second.
Uh, anything else on tax rate approval? So you know, move on to new business hazard mitigation plan adoption. Here we have.
Do you have it in front of you?
Yep.
All right, I'm giving it to Jim right now and Nancy.
As the village.
As the village. I don't, do they need that? Does everyone need to sign or is it?
Everyone needs, um, just real quickly, we approved it on June thirty. And then I I requested whether or not we needed to meet again because the state didn't chime in with its final approval until after that. And I got it in writing if you wanted, the answer was no, those changes were minor.
I'm sorry, I meant to. Both.
Have that.
I did, I forgot, I did want to.
So Jim, hold on, go ahead.
Are you saying the village approved this on six thirty twenty-two?
Yes. And so the advice we got was go ahead and sign it with the date June thirty, because that's what our minutes show, and it was not a problem. Makes sense, that's what we don't.
Yep, okay.
This is, so this is all the question.
Um, yeah, I guess. Paige, if you want.
I don't know what we're doing.
Do we just, so we needed a motion to accept and sign local hazard mitigation plan ad printed.
Anyone would like to read it.
It's substantial.
Anybody wanna make that motion? Uh, so we got a document, right? Uh, approving the document, yeah. This is a prime. I'm just gonna, so this is nothing to do, we're just basically approving this plan again.
Right, that's right.
Okay, yep. I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the local hazard mitigation plan for the town of Westonster. I find whether we just adopt them today.
No, in June thirty for those folks.
Thank you.
Today, you know.
On July fourteen thirty.
Thirty.
Second. Uh, motion has been made and seconded to approve the local hazard mitigation plan as presented. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, or opposed? Ayes have. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan, and Jim.
Moving on to, uh, financial position discussion. We've, we've kicked this around for a fair bit of time, and I think we need to figure out what we're gonna do with that and. Move forward with it.
Right, uh, unfortunately, I do apologize, I've been just trying to come up with a description. And I'll get that to you by Friday.
We, uh, I I just, so you know that I did follow around local surrounding towns. And the people that are happy with their financial people are not willing to share. And and, um, so, uh, Phil. Had one of the best ideas, which we've knocked around in here. You get someone in here doing a financial part-time, so they're in here part-time, and then maybe they're sitting in the lister's office as the admin in there. We, there's jobs that can be, so we can get them full-time and benefited. Twice, but it's, it's just finding the right fit.
To have enough work.
That's right, yes.
A viable position.
Yes, the benefits alone in town, you all know, are worth a lot.
But I wonder if he's writing up that each of include something that the position could include other.
That's right.
Duties or other needs or talents or something that they're willing to write the. Write the position around employees.
Okay, good. So you're gonna work on a description, but, uh.
I'll just see everybody in, but I'll send it to Alan later.
Okay, and we'll, we'll table that for the moment. And we'll keep it on for next. Next.
Bye, Jim.
Thank you.
Good. Good work, sir.
Uh, anything else on financial position discussion at this time? Uh, we'll move on to listers discussion.
John?
John is here. And I think there's probably speak volumes of the listers discussion.
They're just here to listen because I saw it on here.
Um, yeah, so. I don't want anybody taking anything personally, but I, we've. Heard a lot about lack of. Progress in the lister's office.
Coverage.
Coverage. I don't know how, I don't know. Um, and some training that needs to be done and whatnot. Pauline, if you wanna jump in, feel free, um. I'm of the opinion if there's training that needs to be done.
I can't, I can't speak to the training. I can speak of to, um. The impact that. The lack of having a lister in the office. I mean, we've gone weeks and weeks and weeks without a lister in the office. Rachel was gone on, on a educational, um, sabbatical. From March until last week, which, you know, we took a hit from. Jackie's been ill a lot, um, and not been able to come in. Um. There's been. The lack of training opportunities for John, so, I mean, the whole culmination of all of that has resulted in. Um, not only no one in the lister's office, but, um. I'm trying to cover what our people need, um, and I'm, I'm not comfortable, um. As a town clerk, being responsible for making sure that. What these people need is what I can deliver to them. So, anyway, it's been, it's been an issue and, um. Rachel is back and holy cow, she hit the ground running and it's been wonderful. I feel horrible about. You know, John coming forward and and being elected and and lacking the resources to, for training. And, um. You know, I, Jackie's just been ill, so I I don't know what the resolve is, but I I hope. There is one. I hope there is one.
Listers are very, very, very important in town, very, very.
It is.
And, and John, um, I think, I don't know if you've been into the files. That's the best I can do is go into the files, like I can get a list of cards for folks.
Yeah.
And that kind of, and that kind of thing, but as far as what you folks do when you're, I've, I've been in the grand list, that's where I had to do the tax. Um, rate type thing, so, um, I have minimal help that I can give you, but. Member has, is it Tyler, Pauline?
I think that's the name.
If I can interrupt you for a second, so Vermont has a Vermont Assessors and Listers Association. But if the town is a member, which is fifty bucks. That's all it costs for a whole year. It covers training. I have an email I can send you. I haven't waited that far yet. Um, it includes numerous courses, all the training is paid for by the state. For most things. There are a few things. That look like there might be an additional cost, but it's like a hundred bucks for seventy-five bucks.
Yeah, I'm gonna say, we, we have the money to budget.
And it's way cheaper than them.
Yeah.
We used to have, Al, the member, used to come and actually do. It was real good because it was hands-on. They would actually go out to a few homes, walk through it, so everybody would stack, ask questions to learn, you would take. The two or three listed with them and go do it. And they always came back saying, okay, we learned a lot because it's hands-off, you know? I don't know why we couldn't see if we can research it more than we can.
Yep.
John, appreciate all your efforts too of trying to make it work.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely.
In every effort to do it, appreciate your patience.
No, 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 no.
It sounds like you've come up with a viable solution.
Discussing that you had, I was wondering why you didn't invite us. Number one. We put it on your agenda and.
We haven't had an official discussion of any kind here.
You've had a lister's discussion on your, uh, that's how I thought.
I asked Rachel.
Okay.
Oh, I, I.
So, but from my understanding, you have a assessment. You pay for the assessment. The assessor is the only person that can change the assessment in the town. Is that, you're correct, is that what you think too?
Why not?
Okay, so the listers are basically only there to what, sit in the office and help out a customer, is that? I know what the lister's doing, uh.
We've.
Because if you can't, if you can't change, somebody can't come in, well, I guess I'll go back. This year was probably pretty special because nobody complained that their taxes and it went to, uh. The, uh, agreement, right, so that's. And I think Jackie did a good job of that, talking to people and saying, you know, why. This is this, why this is that. So I think you have to give her, uh, some credit for that. Rachel put it on. I personally came in when nobody was able to train. So that's kind of where I'm at. I can probably take some courses, I can. Go in and sit with Rachel and try to learn that, I guess, but I'm not sure if, uh. My thought was I was gonna be going out and checking people's houses and seeing if, uh.
Well, I think, um, one of the most important, if I may, one of the most important, uh, functions is. Processing the property transfers, which changes everybody's. Tax rate, um, and I think, I, I think you're coming, John, I think you're coming in tomorrow to meet with Rachel, and I think that's her primary. Um, um. Role is to, to. Help you understand that, um, and there's, I mean, there's a stack, there's a stack of property transfers that need to be. Processed that haven't been, so she's been working on it, she's great, um, it'll get done. We have a good, it, it'll, you know, it will work out, it's a good team. But it's just been, it's, it's, you know, the office has just been vacant, so, um.
I didn't, yeah. I didn't realize that Jackie wasn't around, you know, I saw on the thing that she had her office hours on Thursday. Rachel had her office hours on Wednesday, and I was.
And, you know, Rachel was gone.
You there, baby, but maybe.
Yeah.
And without the proper training, at that point, you're just.
Right.
I mean, I really can't get on the computer because the assessor said that the last lister made a million dollar mistake. And I don't know how that works.
But basically, the end of your question, it's been a long time. The lister's job was, we get twenty percent. Money from the state, there's twenty percent of the appraisal. Now, you don't set the numbers, but you actually go in and data enter and say. We went to this hall, this is what it looks like. Didn't somebody else set the factory? Basically, you're doing all that entrance.
I don't think that's the case. I think that Tyler, who's the assessor, he's the one that goes and checks out all the property.
Get on all the new property, yeah.
But not, not the list.
But you should be, but back in the day, the listers were going.
Yeah.
But the back, yes.
Yeah, they would, they, they would put the data entry, but they didn't, they didn't put the value, that's what he did.
But I don't think that's happening anymore. I think that Tyler is doing. Is Tyler or Al is the one that goes, once they have a zoning permit. They're the ones that go out, not the lister. I might be wrong, but that was happening now. Is that right?
You're right, you're right.
So the lister's job is not doing that, which I would thought that was my. I don't think I'm cut out to be sitting at a desk with a computer myself, you know, I don't think that's. I mean, I'm willing to give it a go, you know, for the rest of my term, obviously, but I'm not so sure that, uh. I'm cut out for, uh, sitting in a office and, uh, playing computer.
Appreciate that.
The lister should be going with the assessor.
I mean, I think she would be too. I think that, I think the lister should be checking the, uh, the assessor to make sure he's not making his check.
He checks and balances.
Has made his.
That's part of your role as an elected official, is to check and balance exactly for that.
I mean, I think that was what I was trying to focus in on, because Tyler said he's not coming back until the fall to go in and check all of. Places that have been built, this stuff, so then I would go with him. I thought that would be my job.
Without an objective elected official to, I know there's a topic here, but you know, with, with people always saying what's better with what. You could end up, and just in my observation, when someone goes, calls himself as an expert, it really does. And part of having that extra pair of eyes, hopefully give it. You know, pause if there's something not being done correctly, to make sure that the assessor.
Right. And that's time, and I checked his contract to make sure he was dealing in hours.
Exactly right.
That was kind of what my job I thought was.
Yeah.
I didn't think my job.
And kind of, um. Overs, uh, confirming that what I have. Uh, recorded for, for property transfers is done correctly, as it should be. And, um, how it should appear on the grand list, so, um.
Yes, and that's.
I will, I mean, I will get back to Jackie and Rachel and see if we can kind of tighten it all up. Great. I mean, I think that's what I can do.
And I mean, if there's training available in the end, we're gonna do it.
I, I will take training.
Definitely, you know, and if, I know we had talked before. About hours, how previously hours were cut, way back for a real minimum. I don't know how we changed that, but if there's a stack of work that needs to be done and you need the hours to do the work.
There's a ton of hours available.
Uh, yeah, I don't see, I don't think that's I personally.
That's not a problem.
Issue. Like, if you need more schedule in the hour for people that who'd wanna come in and see, don't have to go to the.
Get called every day asking listers where they are.
Basically, if we came back and said, yeah, if you come between one and three on Tuesday, there'll be a listing.
Even, even if someone's saying, okay, John, if you're here on Monday. You're not hearing me, Pauline?
I can't hear you.
Okay, so what I was saying is we get calls every day if the listers are, have their listers in, they speak to a listener, okay? So say you set schedule on Monday and you're, you're, you feel like you're in the weeds. I can step in, Kelly can step in, Pauline can step in, and, and at least we can try and help.
Sounds fair.
I mean, most of them, they, they want a lister's card, they want, you know. So we can, we can definitely help them with that.
Yeah, the difference.
Wait, I mean, then I'm gonna learn how to do it, sure, but I guess, so you think the best thing we do is just me set a date? Or, uh, like a Monday or whatever day, and have a four hour shift.
Do whatever you feel possible, you can do a two-hour shift for a while, do it.
I guess what I'm saying is, don't feel like you're limited. But, I can only work three hours today, well, if you got five hours worth of work today, can't do it in three. Do it, take the five and get it done, and I don't. Speaking for myself, I'm not a nickel and dime, I'm not, I'm not going to look into, wow, you were over by an hour or two.
I listen, I listen to you from the life, I have a turn. That was what I wanted to get to the town. So that's why I don't want to. No, a whole bunch of effort to this either, I want to put, I want to target it maybe so. You know, that's the kind of where I'm at. I really don't want to, uh, be on the payroll, to be honest. Kind of where I'm at, so I'm going to give the town some time. I guess I need some training and some advice.
Yeah.
Thank you for your volunteer and your balls of your essence.
So John has, has Chris or Tyler from Nemrick been in touch with you? Because I've talked to them both about. Um, your situation and, and how they could be helpful to you with training?
I will reach out to them too, I will do that.
Okay, all right, because they both said they would, yeah.
I'll start tomorrow with Rachel and see what'll go from there. And I hope she's there, I mean, I texted her and I haven't got a text back that she's going to be there, but we'll see. Hopefully she does, and we can get it going, and then people can be happy with the lister's office. Sound fair to me.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, John, I appreciate it.
Thanks, John.
Yep.
Any, anything else on listers discussion this time? Thanks, Nancy.
A little too, uh, town manager's report.
The only thing I have left is the trash bags are out.
Got mine.
Got mine.
Oh my. So, yeah, we're not, that won't have to end, actually, but, um, quite inexperienced, lot to it, lot, lot to it. But it's out, it's done, Pauline.
Thank you, Pauline.
We all, I mean, we all came together, adding help, um, we, we just, we pushed them out. Had eleven in to pick them up and, oh, that was my truck, and then, but anyway, that's done, and, um, tax rate's done. Getting a lot of calls over the bridge, but. I think everything's going smoothly so far.
Good, great, great job, all of you, great job.
Thank you. Uh, anything else on managers report? All right, uh, executive session. You want an executive session time? What's that? Yeah, um, just the board or? Yeah, all right, we'll have one tonight, just the board, uh, for a, um, personnel. Evaluation. Personnel evaluation, okay?
Uh, you want to go in the executive session for a personnel, uh, evaluation?
Should I stop recording?
Yeah, we have, we have a few little things before we get to that, but. Second. Uh, motions are made and seconded, we go on an executive session for personnel evaluation. Uh, all of the favor. Motion carried, uh. Boards, committees, and commissions. See anything on that, so we'll. Other business, we have, uh, cemetery deeds. Is it just one, Pauline, or two? It's two.
It's just one, there's two.
I gave you two in case you had an error, so, just sign, just sign one.
Does not, does not matter, just, just one signature, just one signature from the chair.
Just one from the chair and one from Kevin, and I just get, you know, I just. Did two in case there was an error and you needed one, so.
Okay.
Sorry.
Move to a dock, County of Wester, Westminster. Um, following, um, cemetery deed, Benjamin L. and Barbara Dow. Westminster, County of Westminster, one burial located in section B, row fourteen. Found on the east by a house, and on the north by low. And then beyond the west, and then beyond the south, on Westminster West Cemetery. Um, for this day, uh, thirteenth day of July. So, twenty-two, County of Westminster, by duly authorized.
Uh, motion is made and seconded to approve. The cemetery plot for Benjamin L. and Barbara Dow. As written. Uh, any discussion? Uh, all those in favor? Millie, you want one of those to get the wording written?
I'd love it, if you, if you have an extra one, thank you. Thank you so much.
For the extra coffee.
Thank you both.
Thank you, guys.
Date of the next meeting, July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two. I was hoping to get away with one for July, but it seems like we probably need to have that one, so. At this time, we'll go into executive session.